Okay, good evening. We will start the meeting. This is the Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners' meeting. Today is Wednesday, September 28th. It is a little after 7:00 PM. We will, before we call the order, just a couple announcements. If you have a cellphone, if you can put that on silent or vibrate, we would appreciate that. Commissioner Larry Fleese is excused from this meeting. And he's with his family out of state. And I would like to personally thank all the members of the public, the county commission, and the county employees who extended their sympathy, and all the sympathy cards and emails that I had received regarding the passing of my brother and my father recently, and the attendance that most of you were graciously attending on Saturday for the funeral officiated by Reverend Edwin Tomy. I sincerely want to send my sincere appreciation and thank you for your support. And I couldn't have gotten through that whole ordeal without your presence, so thank you so much. We will call the meeting to order. We will start with the opening ceremonies, and we will have the invocation by Commissioner Herb Lemko.
Well, Lord, thank you for bringing us all together again. We pray that you will be with each and every one of us as we deliberate the county's business. We also want to say thanks for all your many blessings that you provide for all the people in our community. As we enter into the fall season and the time of harvest, we pray that you'll be with each of those farmers that bring that to our tables. We pray that you will be with the lost ones that we have lost, and we pray that you will be with those that are still concerned or suffering from those losses. And we pray that you'll do this in your holy name. Amen.
Commissioner Lemko will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in his household, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we need a roll call attendance, please.
Commissioner Wheelock.
Yes, ma'am.
Thomas.
Yep.
Richardson.
Here.
Max Bauer.
Here.
Lemko.
Here.
Henshaw.
Present.
Gilman.
Here.
Chairman Inman.
Here.
Okay. Next item is the approval of minutes. We have three sets. We need approval on the first set of August 31st. That was the, that would be the regular board meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lemko, seconded by Wheelock, to approve the August 31st regular board meeting minutes. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Post passes. Now we have the minutes of the September 7th special session budget minutes on page nine. We need approval on that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the special budget session on September 7th minutes as drafted.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Wheelock, seconded by Commissioner Henshaw to approve the minutes special session on September 7th. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Post passes. We need a motion to approve the September 8th special session budget minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the September 8th special session budget minutes.
Moved by Commissioner, moved by Commissioner Gilman, seconded by Commissioner Henshaw to approve the September 8th special session budget minutes. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Post passes. All right. We now come to our first public comment. And if there is an issue on the agenda that is part of our consent calendar or elsewhere in the report, if you would please indicate to me that you would like to speak at that time, we would allow that. But this is general public comment, and you're more than welcome to speak on any matter on the agenda at this time, or any other county-related business. So the clerk will read the rules.
Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provisions of the Michigan Open Meetings Act as amended. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. One, any person wishing to address the board shall state his or her name and address. Two, no person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter, excluding time needed to answer Commissioners' questions. The chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. Chairperson may at his or her discretion extend the amount of time any person is allowed to speak.
Okay, you've heard the rules of public comment. Does any member of the public wish to speak at this time? Hearing and seeing no indication for a public comment, we will move on, and there's public comment towards the end of our meeting session. We will now move on to the approval of the agenda as presented. Commissioner Richardson.
Move for approval of the agenda. Second.
All right. Moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Henshaw to approve the agenda as presented. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Post passes. All right. That moves, that gets us to special orders of business. We have the ballots for the Board of Canvassers. Has everyone completed it and gotten it to the clerk? If we could pass those to the clerk, we would appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just comment, I hope no one voted for me because, according to Mr. Cooney, I guess I couldn't serve anyone.
Yeah, I had to ask if elected officials could be on the Board of Canvassers.
I wasn't trying to get the position.
We just wanted to tie you up a little bit more than you already are.
Well, that's an idea. Sorry, you can't be a Commissioner anymore, you gotta go be on the Board of Canvassers.
Well, Commissioner Richardson, I hate to tell you that it was a tie vote between you and Mr. Hornberger.
Well, since I can't serve, then Mr. Hornberger will get the position.
You need a vote, you need a vote.
No, I'll just let you know who. And the Republican, Linda Witt, received the majority of the votes for our Republican representative.
So you need, do you need the consent of the, on the change for...
No, I actually have a vote, and I have your ballots.
So on the tie, do you need anything else for public record?
Well, normally in a tie vote, what we do is we put voted or not voted in a hat, and the two candidates come in and draw.
So if you, for the set of the minutes, just withdraw your name, I guess would be proper.
Well, I think that the fact that I can't serve would be sufficient.
Okay, all right, okay. That would be fine, as long as it's stated in the minutes. All right. Moving on to item two, that's the application for two homebuyer purchase rehab grant applications. And we will need some help on this one. We'll call on Jean Duranzy. If you can get yourself introduced and give us the overview on that.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Jean Duranzy with the Grand Traverse County Planning and Development Department. And at Ways and Means, our department asked for permission to make two applications to the Michigan State Housing Development Authority. And part of that grant applications, there's several components that I need to make sure that are in the public hearing to make, to have the general public aware of how we're going to be using those grants. And the planning department looked at the updated 2009 housing needs assessment. And that housing needs assessment identified that there, there was need for additional home ownership, affordable home ownership, in our community. We also looked at your current strategic plan, which identifies and targets a strategy, a strategy to improve access to and quantity of affordable housing. The proposed application would be through the Michigan State Housing Development Authority Housing Resource Fund. The anticipated source of the funds are called Home, which is a federal resource that is allocated to smaller communities through MISTHA. The application itself will be submitted to MISTHA on September 30th, 2011, which is this Friday. There are two applications we are asking for, one for $300,000 and one for $195,000, for a total of 495. Both applications will benefit low and moderate income individuals. The target area for the $300,000 will be the city of Traverse City, and the target area for the $195,000 will be for the village of Kingsley and the village of Fife Lake. This program, the Home Buyer Purchase Rehabilitation Program, will not displace anyone. These funds will be used for homes that are for sale. And if the homes are occupied, then the homebuyer knows that the home is being for sale and it will be sold and make other arrangements at time of closing. The home will be immediately available at the time of closing. The proposed activity will be for 0% deferred MISTHA fund that is forgiven over 10 years to low and moderate income families. And the assistance would be used for closing costs or for moderate home repairs. And those home repairs would bring the home up to HUD standards and can be used for lead-based paint testing and lead remediation. Again, the two applications, the $300,000 will be for homes that are in the city of Traverse City, and the other for homes that are for sale in the village of Kingsley or the village of Fife Lake for an application of $195,000. The total MISTHA funds that can be used on any one project is $37,500, and that includes a developer fee. Our department is asking for favorable recommendation, and you have the resolution in your packet.
Okay. Okay, you've received the overview of the grant applications for $300,000 and $195,000. We now need to open up a public hearing on those, on the combination of those two matters. So I will now open up the public hearing. Does any member of the public wish to speak on this matter? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing, and we have a resolution on page five, which covers everything that Jean has covered, and the necessary disclosures that we need to have this thing happen. So we need a motion, a move, or, excuse me, I'm going to go to Commissioner Richardson.
Yes, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the submission of two homebuyer purchase rehabilitation grant applications to the Michigan State Housing Authority, one for $300,000 for the city of Traverse City, and the second for $195,000 for the village of Kingsley and the village of Fife Lake.
Okay. Second, okay. It's moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Wheelock to approve the resolution titled "Application to Michigan State Housing Authority for Home Buyer Purchase Rehabilitation Program Grants." Is there discussion on the motion? Commissioner Gilman.
You know, for the last five years, I've been looking at the leak in my ceiling in my bedroom. In fact, we had to actually move our bed at one point because a really bad ice storm had left a lot of weight in the roof. Yeah, I'd probably prioritized, and I probably wanted to, you know, do other things, but I have to face the reality that one of these days, I'm going to have to try to save enough money to fix my roof. I need a new roof. I wouldn't qualify for, for any of these repairs. And yet, I still pay state and federal and local taxes and, and property taxes, and my money that's being taken from me, as well as from my neighbors, is going to fund these Again, and I pointed this out in, in the committee of the whole, this is redistribution. It is picking winners. I'm apparently not one of those winners. And, and although I'm not trying to say pity me, I'm trying to say it's inappropriate for government to be taking money from people to give to other people so they can buy homes, homes they can rent, to repair homes that they own. If they cannot afford to repair those homes, maybe they ought not have those homes. And for me, I'm looking at selling property so I can fix my own. It's, it's, it's the bottom line. It's just, it's, it's inappropriate, it's redistribution, and we shouldn't be doing it.
Okay. Is there any other, Commissioner comments? Commissioner Wheelock.
Well, I guess, you know, my point is, we have multiple housing needs assessments and say we have additional need for affordable home, housing in our community. We've have a land bank, we've partnered with Habitat for Humanity, we've partnered with Goodwill, we have set aside money in a housing trust fund. This is another tool and another source of income for us to get money to help people stay in their homes or to be able to afford to live in our community. Most of us know that the cost of living in our community is pretty high. And the one thing that I'm really excited about this grant application is it has shown us what I've been yelling about for a long time. We have housing needs outside of the city of Traverse City. We, it specifically targets the village of Kingsley and the village of Fife Lake. Why it doesn't target some of the other areas is because they don't meet the criteria, because we have to have water and sewer available for them in order to meet the MISTHA requirements. But, but the fact is, we have finally found a program that has identified that we have a housing need outside of the city of Traverse City. You know, I, you know, most of you have heard me say over and over, I'm not going to tell people, you know, I know you need affordable housing, and I'd be more than happy to help you with that, but you've got to move from Mayfield Township to the city of Traverse City in order for me to help you. You know, we're trying to find ways to help these people stay in their homes and be able to live where they want to live within our community. And this is another tool to do that. You know, and like I said, we've, we've put the housing trust fund together, we've got the housing task force working with that, and, and we truly are making large steps toward helping people stay in their homes and be able to afford to live in our community.
Okay. Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Gilman.
With regard to affordable housing, you know, I've, I've always often wondered, what does it mean? You know, some people say, well, I mean, it's a $100,000 home, or it's, it's, it's a certain rent level. To me, affordable housing is, is allowing options, and we have restrictive zoning, and in Traverse City, we have restrictive zoning. And I watched several months ago when, when the discussion was being held, whether Traverse City was going, going to allow a piece of property to be sold, but only under the condition that, that there were affordable housing units built, or a minimum of 10 affordable housing units that were built. And I thought to myself, well, that's just silly. A, you've destroyed the property value, and B, all you have to do is start to unrestrict the, your, your existing housing. In other words, allow smaller spaces to live in if people want to live in smaller spaces and pay less rent. You know, watch out for overly restrictive fire code, for example, situations that add cost, okay? Affordable housing can be had. I mean, I'll tell you, if, if somebody really needs a roof over their head, you know, better than the picnic table out at the civic center, that the guy, the guy who sleeps there every single night, wouldn't it be better to have him in a regular house, in a, even a small house? Would it be better than having him sleep in a picnic table out underneath the awning at the civic center? So frankly, I don't, the, the affordable housing canard is, is one that I just hear from government too often, and it's, and frankly, it's, it's served from, it's just lip service is what it is. And as far as this kind of program, this is the kind of program, by the way, getting people into houses they can't afford, this is what's collapsed our economy.
Okay. Any other comments from Commissioners? Hearing none, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Wheelock to approve the application as presented for the two grant programs. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Max Bauer.
No.
Lemko.
Yes.
Henshaw.
Yes.
Gilman.
No.
Wheelock.
Yes, ma'am.
Chairman Inman.
Yes.
Motion passes, and there are two nays. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. That leads us to the consent calendar. In the consent calendar for the members of the public, these are items that the county commission has received as information under receive and file. And also, we have, we have three committees of the whole, and we make recommendations to the board, the full Board of Commissioners at the end of the month to give the public notice of what we discussed in our preliminary recommendation. So the, and we will read the consent calendar, the clerk will read the consent calendar.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items to be dealt with by one commission motion without discussion. Any member of the commission, staff of the public, may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed therefrom and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted, receive and file or approval is approved by a single commission action adopting the consent calendar. Receive and file, one, resolution regarding personal property taxes, Bay County; two, resolution supporting employee freedom to work at Lake and Lepire Counties; three, Northwest Michigan Community Action Agency, minutes of June 16th, 2011; four, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, minutes of June 29th, 2011; five, Northern Michigan Substance Abuse Services, minutes of July 11th, 2011; six, Economic Development Corporation, minutes of July 14th, 2011; seven, Board of Public Works, minutes of July 25th, 2011; eight, Brown, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, minutes of July 27th, 2011; nine, Central Dispatch Policy Board, minutes of August 11th, 2011; 10, Economic Development Corporation, minutes of August 11th, 2011; 11, Sewer and Water, minutes of August 11th, 2011; 12, Conservation Resource Alliance, minutes of August 18th, 2011; 13, Resolution 153 of 2011, underground injection well, approved at Public Health and Safety on September 7th, 2011. Referrals, none. Approvals, Public Health and Safety Committee recommends approval of the following resolutions. 14th, Grand Traverse County Proclamation for National Recovery Month, prevention works, treatment is effective, and people recover in Grand Traverse County. 15, Sheriff's Office Secondary Road Grant Application. 16, Grand Traverse Sheriff's Office Property Room Surplus. 17, Counseling Services Agreement Renewal. 18, Medical Director Services Agreement Renewal. 19, Fiscal Year 2011 Emergency Management Performance Grant. 20, Grand Traverse Sheriff's Office OHSP Traffic Enforcement Grant for Fiscal Year 2012. 21, Supplemental Budget Request Soldiers' Relief. There is no Resource Management Administration Committee meeting held in December, in September. Ways and Means Committee recommends approval of the following resolutions. 22, Advanced Lighting Technology Grant Planning. 23, Hearing Conservation Program. 24, Purchasing Policy Revised, August 2011. 25, Restructuring of Board of Public Works. 26, Restructuring of Resource Recovery Council. 27, NICS Michigan Interlocal Agreement. 28, Classification Plan Housing Coordinator. 29, Budget Adjustments.
Okay. The clerk has read the consent calendar. Does any member of the public wish to pull any of the items off the consent calendar for further discussion in the meeting? Seeing none, does any of the Board of Commissioners wish to pull an item? Commissioner Thomas.
Question number 13, shouldn't that be up by number 14 for approval? That was approved at a committee meeting, not at the board meeting.
That is true. All right, we'll move 13.
Actually, I believe we approved that as a board action at the committee meeting.
Right.
And, and just wanted it ratified.
Yeah. Because of the short time.
That's right. That's correct.
Receiving file isn't...
So we did ratify that at that committee meeting, which Bob said was allowable.
Receiving file isn't ratification.
You already...
We already ratified.
You approved it that night, as Bob had said you could do.
So this is just a file.
As a committee of the whole, we can ratify it and skip the board. So...
Just hate to see it go for a while.
Am I standing corrected? All right, any other issues to be pulled? Commissioner Gilman.
Two, 20, and 27, please.
Two, 20, and 27?
Yes.
All right, hang on, give a second, write that down. Any other Commissioners like to pull a consent item off the calendar? Seeing none, we need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item two, 20, and 27.
Support. Okay, moved by Commissioner Wheelock, seconded by Commissioner Richardson to approve the consent calendar as presented with the exception of item two, 20, and 27. We'll have a roll call vote on this, please.
Commissioner Richardson.
Yes.
Max Bauer?
Yes.
Lemko?
Yes.
Henshaw?
Yes.
Gilman?
Yes.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Inman.
Yes, consent calendar passes. And for members of the public, the three items pulled off the consent calendar will be discussed under item I, items removed from consent calendar, which is after the administrator's report.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Have we discussed moving that up, or, you know, doing consent calendar items immediately?
Yeah, in our, we can do that with the...
Oh, you were, you were gone that meeting, I'm sorry.
I was gone that meeting.
I apologize.
Yeah, the board, the board did ask for that, and all the other agendas, it will be put immediately after... From now on? Okay. The, after the consent calendar, but your board rules specify that the board meeting, the order of board meeting, and this is the order of theirs. So we'll have to change those rules.
Okay.
So, maybe at the Texas Committee, we can just make a motion to amend the board rules.
When would we do that?
Next RMA.
Do it at Public Health and Safety or RMA, either one.
RMA?
Yeah, that's fine.
Right now, get it done.
All right, okay. So we will move on to the administrator's report. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. We will move on to the administrator's report. First item, Dennis.
Yes, the first item is a request for the board to consider the approval of authorization of spending money to do the equalization studies as they relate to the commercial and industrial studies for the county. We are in the middle of, as you know, Lori Spencer has resigned as our equalization director. We are in the middle of putting together a transition plan. I met with Lori again yesterday with Jen Seaman to discuss how we'll get through the rest of this year while we, while we look to recruit a new director. And, excuse me, we went over a list of the duties and the responsibilities that were legally required to complete by the end of the year, to discuss what she'll be able to complete before she leaves on August 21st, and what items we will not be able to get done, and what the capacity of her staff is to complete those items. One item that she feels will not get the, the appropriate commitment is the, and will not be able to be done, is the commercial and industrial studies that have to be done before, to get them back to the townships before apportionment's done. We are recommending that we, she has recommended a firm who can do this, but I'm going to ask you to consider approving this in a different way after discussion with Commissioner Henshaw, who mentioned that he thought we should be looking at multiple firms. We are not required to look at multiple firms, but I think it's a good idea that we do. So my request to you is to authorize hiring of a firm at a cost not to exceed $10,000 to do the commercial and industrial studies this fall, so that we'll be able to complete it on time for the townships and the cities and villages.
And it would be part of that recommendation that you are going to go out and bid it, or no?
It's not required to be bid by law, because it's professional services, but I will require Lori to go out and get quotes from multiple sources so that we know we get the best price.
All right, okay. Commissioner Lemko.
Yeah, my, my question is, is first of all, is, you know, Lori's got, what, two days left?
Lori has till the 21st of October.
Oh, 21st of October.
You said the 21st of August.
You said August.
That's my first...
We only got two days.
Long day. 21st of October.
Okay. With all the work that she's got piled on her, and then you're going to want her to be able to go out and do this, yeah, I have a real problem with that. I, I think you're asking too much, you know, when you're doing this, and, you know, and I understand what you want to try and do, but she's, she's probably done a lot of research, and, and I would have to respect what she's doing here, and I really think that you ought to, and because of the time, you know, if you, if you go out for bid, it's going to take you two weeks, another week to be able, you make the decision, so you're not going to be starting until the 1st of November. You don't have time.
I'm expecting this to be not a formal bid process. I'm expecting her, since it's professional services, I'm going to direct her to go out to two other reputable firms, if she can find them, and get two other quotes. That's all I'm asking her to do. She did this in about a half an hour, it's going to take her maybe another hour to do this work, and then we're going to award to the bidder that seems most responsive and at the least expensive cost. So no, we're not going to do a formal...
Just, yeah, I'm just concerned the work's low.
And I'm just, I'm telling you that I've talked to her with this, and we both feel this is a priority, and she has no problem with doing it.
All right. Commissioner Gilman. Our Commissioner Gilman.
Mr. Chairman, a move we approve proposal for commercial industrial appraisal work not to exceed $10,000.
Is there a second? All right, move by Commissioner Gilman, seconded by Commissioner Richardson, to move forward with the staff recommendation regarding the commercial industrial equalization study. Is there discussion? Commissioner Wheelock.
Dennis, the only discussion, your only question I have, is this a service that we could possibly, you know, as, as we look at this contract, is this an opportunity for us to think about whether we want to contract our equalization department?
Yeah. I don't know whether legally we can contract our equalization department, we're checking into that. The other thing that we're doing is we're working with the COG. There's some discussion Commissioner Inman may be aware of that might allow for, for example, the COG to hire a Level Four assessor on behalf of the 10 townships that may need one and don't have one, that we could all use and share at, at a much lower cost. So, that's another option that we're looking at. In all likelihood, in the next week or two, I'm going to bring you a proposal, asking you to consider to allow us to go out within the budget and do the residential studies that have to be done as well. This is all taking place as we assess the staff. So, yep, we're aware that the commission would like us to look at the possibility of bidding out the management of that operation, but I, we haven't made a determination if it can be done yet or not.
Commissioner Gilman.
Did, didn't Lori Spencer contract out to Lillenaw County for, for these kind of services? Is it different because she is a part of another governmental agency, or?
It's, she contracted out the, the, all she contracted out was the oversight on signing the documents, certifying them as a Level Four. She had nothing to do with managing the operation. I, I have to believe it's, it can be done, I don't know if there's anybody out there that can do it, but we're still checking that, I want to make sure it's legal.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, made by Commissioner Gilman, seconded by Commissioner Richardson, to move forward with the staff recommendation not to exceed $10,000. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes. Third, we have claims, and Dean, if you want to make any remarks on that?
The, was there another?
Number two.
Board rules.
Oh, I'm sorry. Board rules. Okay. Apologize for that.
Your current board rules require an annual meeting, and that meeting should be held between September 14th and October 16th, that's why we're bringing it to you this evening. The principal requirements are actually defined in statute, and I've tried to summarize those in the second paragraph on this document. And if you read through that, and not to shortchange this requirement by any means, but it sounds very much like the information that's included in your budget document. And, and that's why we're not doing anything more formal than just making you aware that there is a requirement for an annual meeting, and I'm indicating here that, you know, we feel that the statutory requirements have been met based on the budget document. We're not complete with our budget deliberations at this point, but once you complete those deliberations, I believe the statutory requirements have been fulfilled. We have also provided a staffing plan summary. The plan going forward is to have that more formalized in the actual budget document, but when I reviewed this with Dennis, he thought we were lacking in that area, because we do not include the staffing plans or organizational charts in all of the budgets. And we're going to try to make that change and incorporate that information in subsequent years. So, it's primarily information than to meet the requirements of your board rules.
So, what meeting would be, what meeting are you indicating that we have the annual meeting at?
This. We're in it right now.
This is it. This is it.
In other words, under the statute, and it's an old, old statute.
Right.
You're supposed to provide certain information, and we've, we've gone through that information. It's all information we provide you in the budget document, so we've technically met it, and what we're telling you tonight is, this is the annual meeting where we're reiterating that that information was provided to you in your budget binder.
All right, okay.
But in future years, the one area that I think we have to improve in is in providing the personnel information. So, starting next year, and perhaps even still during this budget, our intention will be, in the future, to give you, with each department, a list of all the positions of each department, so that the board is aware of what the staffing plan looks like in each budget.
Okay. Do we need to?
You do not need to take any action.
Right. I'm just wondering that, on the date that we select the annual meeting, that we, on our agenda, we title it the annual meeting for the Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners, and, just a suggestion.
Well, just the comment, the statute does allow that meeting to be held concurrent with another meeting, and that's why we're basically piggybacking on.
So, as long as we've got documentation that we had it, and on what date and time and everything.
We did the same thing last year.
All right, okay.
Bob, do you concur that this is in full compliance with the statutory requirement of an annual meeting?
Yes. Okay. All right, so that's information only, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Moving on now to the claims and accounts. Dean, do you have any remarks before we turn this to the commission?
No, I did provide the copy before, or summary before the meeting, so we need your approval on the claims for the month of September.
Move we approve the claim.
Support. All right, move by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Henchel, to approve claims in the amount $11,956,532,39. Is there discussion? Yes.
Just a thought, I'm just wondering if part of this discussion on, on a monthly basis, we should find out from the committee whether or not they found any concerns that they had on the, on the.
Believe me, you'd hear about it.
Well, you know, I just didn't know.
Yeah, we ask questions every time.
You do, okay.
Yeah, if there was any issues, we would bring that up to you.
Okay, perfect.
And we, and we have, we have done so at previous meetings, we've prepared a memo and asked for, you know, a certain thing to be asked about.
Thank you.
With, with claims, we need a roll call of those things.
Commissioner Max Bauer?
Yes.
Lemko?
Yes.
Henchel?
Yes.
Gilman?
Yes.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Thomas?
Yep.
Richardson?
Yes.
Chairman Inman?
Yes, okay, claims and accounts is approved. We now move on to items removed from the consent calendar. Or, excuse me, does that conclude the administrator's report?
It does.
Okay.
Dennis, were you going to speak about the thing at the Easening Pool last week?
I'm sorry?
About the repair work at the Easening Pool last week?
Thank you, thank you. If the board would allow, I do have one other thing to update on.
Okay.
Last week, we had an emergency situation where the diving board broke at the pool. And we brought out, in an emergency, we brought out a welding company to review it, and that welding company indicated they could not fix it. And so, in the emergency situation, the pool manager called Commissioner Wheelock's company and asked them to come take a look at it, which they did. Commissioner Wheelock indicated he could fix it, and so, they called me, and I authorized them to get the pool diving board fixed, which they came and did Friday afternoon, and it was done in two or three hours, and I, and it's working now, and I told Sonny he might have to, we might require him to actually jump on it.
Test it.
But first, I want to thank Commissioner Wheelock. He called, when he called and left me the message, he said, Dennis, we have this conflict issue. I said, this is an emergency, we need to get it done. I'm assuming it was a few hundred dollars, I haven't seen a bill yet.
Two, $2.50, I think.
And so, I authorized him to go ahead and do that, so we didn't have to have the dive team not be able to dive in their practice and have a meet, which I think was Monday or Tuesday.
Oh, that afternoon.
That afternoon was the meet. So, we were able to get it fixed, so.
Do we want to just deal with it right now?
Yeah, Bob, how do you, how would you want us to handle that in this situation? We've got all kinds of questions for you today.
Wheelock will have to abstain.
When it comes back.
Well, we haven't gotten the bill, that'll come in the claims next month.
Well, I just didn't know whether we needed to file, you know, normally, I would give you a letter of conflict, and then, then we wouldn't do the work for 10 days.
You don't have to do that, because you've given notice at the meeting, but then the vote should be after the bill comes.
So, then the vote will be most likely next month's claims at the board meeting.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Commissioner, I forgot that.
All right. All right, that moves us to items removed from the consent calendar, and the first item was item number two, under receive and file. Commissioner Gilman, you have the floor.
I'd just like to say how proud I am of this board, and it's forward-looking, it's forward-seeking motion to, to offer a resolution in support of the, of the Freedom to Work resolution. This state needs help, and we, of course, were the first county in the state to offer a resolution in support of this, and, and as you see here, we've got a couple more that have now joined with us, as well as, there's about four others that have not, we have not yet seen here. But, again, I'd just like to say that I am very proud of this board for doing the right thing, and I move that we approve the.
Receive and file.
We have, we have receive and filed these.
All right, we have a motion to, by Commissioner Gilman, to receive and file item number two. Is there support?
Support.
So, support by Commissioner Max Bauer, discussion?
Yeah.
Yes?
On that last paragraph of Representative Baumsteh, was that Dagwood? Just wondering.
It's a different thing entirely.
I think that's a different Baumsteh.
Yeah. It's a different sheet.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes? Keep care of item number two, now we move on to item number 20. Commissioner Gilman, you have the floor.
All right, this is, this is actually for the sheriff's, if you, if you could, please, thank you. I just, I have a question, and, and I know you may or may not have the answer right now. I, I tried to get the information for the budget meeting earlier today, but I just want to know how much, when you do the, the operation that is involved with the, with this grant, basically, the, the, what, how much more do we spend, or how much more does the sheriff's department spend? What, what, what resources do we use that we would not use if we did not participate in this particular activity, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Short answer, Commissioner Gilman, we don't know the answer to that yet. The sheriff was talking to the command officers in charge of the grant. That is a process that would require us go back through the grant year, pulling the officers' dailies, finding out what their mileage was, finding out if that particular citation issued required court appearance or not, those types of things. So, it's not something we can immediately produce for you. There are costs, over and above the allotted amount by the state of Michigan, those costs include gas, over and above the 5% allowed for gas. I don't know if you're aware of this, but this grant is split between the city and the county, two-thirds and a third. We are allowed a 5% allotment for gas, so that would have to be taken into consideration as well. We would have to determine any costs over and above, any activity on that grant during enforcement is not covered by the grant. That would include training, that would include court time, that would include any type of overtime associated with an arrest that occurred during that grant.
Now, it seems when we were discussing this before, that you had mentioned that the grants used to be bigger. Do you remember what they used to be?
They used to be upward near $50,000.
$50,000, okay. I was stuck on $76,000 for some reason, and I hadn't, and, and I just, I just remembered that I, we'd, we'd talked about it, but I couldn't remember the exact number, and I hadn't written it down, so, I appreciate that, I'm, I'm done.
Yeah, Commissioner Lemko.
Motion to approve. Support.
Move by Commissioner Lemko, seconded by Commissioner Wheelock, to approve item number 20, Grand Traverse County Sheriff's Department, the, the.
Thank you.
Grant, traffic enforcement grant for '12, in the amount of $12,000. Discussion?
I think he has some.
I just want to assure Mr. Gilman, you will get an answer to your question, sir. It may not be exact, but we are working on.
Yeah, I still, no matter what the, the vote is here, I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Henchel.
Well, with all due respect to our sheriff's department and the great job that they do, I just feel that chasing people down for not wearing their seatbelt when there's nothing else wrong is not an effective use of our resources. I think there's plenty of cases that go unsolved, and, you know, other areas that could be looked at, and I realize this grant isn't all about that, there's a good portion that's not. And Officer Jetter really tried to inform me that he did a good job, but I, I still think a seatbelt sting is, is going the wrong way. It's not looking for people that are, you know, hurting other people, you know, it's really, it's a victimless crime, so to speak. You know, if somebody is breaking other laws, and they happen to not be wearing a seatbelt, then, then, fine, write them a ticket for it, but just to have a sting just around seatbelts, it just, it seems, I mean, with all, I mean, the things we see in the paper about the nasty crimes going on, you know, it makes me wonder, are we doing the right things?
You'd be surprised at how many of those nasty things are actually caught during a safety belt, safety belt enforcement zone, and this is not a sting. I mean, we, we do everything but fly the blimp over these zones to let people know that this is a safety belt enforcement grant. We make drug arrests, felony arrests, OIL arrests, OWI arrests, we do FOC warrants off of these zones. This is just a mechanism that the state is trying to use to assure their compliance with the safety belt, compliance, at 97% at this point, but I don't make that law, we just operate within it.
Do you happen to have a statistic, how many, how many of the seatbelt violators you pull over end up having other charges?
A lot.
More than half?
I don't know the exact number, but it is a significant number of arrests that come off of the enforcement zones.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Well, I would suspect that within the next couple of years, the seatbelt component will be taken out of this grant.
Most likely.
Because, because the compliance rate is so high, that they're not going to spend state money to.
At which point I'll vote for it.
To do that.
Yeah. Okay. Commissioner Gilman and Commissioner Richardson.
As a side note, it was funny, the, I don't know if it was that night, or maybe it was the night after, because we'd had a couple, a couple of board meetings. On my way home, at Hastings and Parsons, there was a deputy with his, with his spotlight shining in cars as they were passing through the intersection, I thought that was the strangest thing in the world. Was that?
Well, they weren't shining it through cars, that's a dangerous activity.
They were shining it through cars.
That they were looking for something, maybe on the other side of the road, but the deputies would not intentionally blind a traveler.
It was, it was fixed and shining through cars, and, and it was, it was interesting, because I thought, this is, this is kind of funny, because we just had this discussion, so.
Well, I'm guessing they were looking for you.
Maybe.
Everybody, everybody thinks he drives a yellow with black stripes truck. Commissioner Richardson.
Well, I mean, the, the whole point of the safety belt enforcement is to get people to wear safety belts, it's about highway safety, it's about, you know, reducing injuries and lives lost, and all that kind of stuff, and they're not, the point is not to write tickets, they obviously will write tickets if they have to, the point is to get people to use their seatbelts, because we have seen that they do save lives and save money, not only for the public, the society at large, but for the people who end up having to wear their seatbelts.
Yeah. I, I have a comment, and it's, I don't know if it's funny or not, but I said, I told Nate after the meeting, after our committee of the whole, I said, you know, I'm in a lot of trouble, because I always wear my seatbelt, but I always wear it underneath my arm, you[1659.41] You know, I strap it so my, both arms are free for my, for my wheel, okay? So I strap it under the arm, click it, and I know it's been a long time since I've been pulled over, but, you know, the times that I have been pulled over, soon as I pull over, I pop that seatbelt open, and I start digging for my wallet, and start, okay, is my, I gotta get my license out first, and then I gotta find my, my proof of insurance and my registration, and I can't find my wallet, so where did I put it? And I'm looking in my center console, and the cop's right now, he's looking at me, and I said, can I have just one second? I gotta find everything here for you. And the seatbelt's been zipped up, and I'm like, you know, I don't, I don't, I'm just typical of the average driver, or I'm just not.
I believe we have a card for that, because it's called Go Directly to Jail.
Yeah.
Do Not Pass Go.
Yeah, but, you know, I, I don't know how, you know, I don't know if people do that, I do that, and I'm like, you know, and then, then I would have to explain that I had my seatbelt on, I had to pop it off to get my license out, and, you know, it's gotta be one big mess out there when you pull people over and say, well, I had it on, I just pulled it off to get my wallet out, or whatever.
There's a whole interaction there. But the typical response would be, sure, Mr. Unmich.
I'd rather get the ticket. I'd rather get the ticket, and I said, I'd--
Sounded like a confession to me.
Yeah. So I'm just, for the people that are actually wearing seatbelts and popping it off, I'm praying for them.
All right, Commissioner Thomas.
Well, the shame of it is that all the people that I see every day, they're on the phones, and that's illegal. And they kill other people. One who fails to wear his seatbelt only kills one person, and that's him.
Cell phones are not illegal.
No.
Texting is.
Texting is.
Texting is.
But people still, I mean--
Distractive driving is illegal.
Crossing the center line is illegal.
Unless you're a Grand Traverse County employee, other than Sheriff's Department, then it is illegal for you to use a cellphone while you're driving.
Distractive driving is illegal.
Any other discussion on the motion?
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Nate.
Does everybody understand the motion? We have a motion.
Yeah.
A second to approve the resolution as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Lemkool.
Here.
Here.
Are you sure? Yes.
Questionable.
Attendance, please.
Commissioner Henschel?
No.
Gilman?
No.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Thomas?
Yep.
Richardson?
Yes.
Max Bauer?
Yes.
Chairman Niman?
Yes. Motion passes with two nays. Next item is item number 27. Commissioner Gilman, you have the floor.
All right, I just, I disagree with the next Michigan agreement. I think it complicates government, it adds yet another layer. And just pull it off so that anybody watching, who didn't watch during the committee of the whole, gets an opportunity to understand that this county is now involving itself in yet another layer of government that the people can't reach, so.
All right. I don't see any hands, anybody want to speak on this matter? Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would move to approve the resolution that Grand Traverse County hereby approves the interlo, interlocal agreement to create the Grand Traverse region next Michigan development corporation.
Support. Okay, moved by Commissioner Wheelock, seconded by Commissioner Lemkool to approve item number 27, next Michigan, interlocal agreement. Is there discussion?
I guess the comment that I would make is, you know, similar to what I made a week ago. I'm still not quite sure exactly what all the benefits, or what benefits are gonna be, but I can absolutely see no harm to the, to this community to involve ourselves in anything that may bring additional jobs into our community.
Okay, all right. Further discussion? Commissioner Henschel.
I notice, there's what, five townships, well, including the city?
Three.
I'm sorry, three, three townships?
Blair, East Bay, and Garfield.
What kind of responses did the other townships give to this, or were they even offered?
Well, several of them, yes. We had presentations, remember we had that big meeting at NMC?
Yeah.
Where we invited people to come?
That was very preliminary, yeah.
It was very preliminary, but in, in addition to that, they have had other discussions, they've been invited to be, participate. Some of them attended several of the meetings before they made a decision that it was not for them. Gene, do you want to expand on that?
Yeah, because I, I know that I explained it at my township board meetings, but--
There was representatives from East Bay, and from Garfield, and from Blair, as part of the working group to form this interlocal agreement. Garfield Township approved the interlocal agreement yesterday. East Bay Township has discussed it, I believe, on two different occasions, and they'll be looking at that at their meeting on October 10th, Blair on October 11th.
The city next Monday.
The city next Monday. We introduced it at their study session on Monday, and received a nod to move forward to their next meeting, which is on Monday.
So if you look at this carefully, if you look at the interlocal agreement, there are provisions in the agreement to allow any and all other townships that may want to join in the future to join in the agreement and have participation in it. But it has to meet certain criterias, you know, use of air transportation and things like that, that may really limit some, some, the applicability of this program to some of the townships. But I think they've had, I was there when we had discussions about the fact that it could be expanded at some point in time to other townships that want to participate.
Correct. We have, the language is in the interlocal agreement that it can be expanded to other townships. It needs three-quarters vote of the, the five participating municipalities that are there right now. So we do, we can expand it when it's, when another township will be requested.
I was just wondering what kind of responses, the ones that didn't join in gave, and, you know, are we gonna, are some of our county commissioners gonna go to meetings down the road and then, and have people tell us, well, why didn't you invite us to do this?
Oh, the townships that are not part of the interlocal agreement.
Yeah.
We, we did talk to those other townships, and said that we wanted to keep it small at this point, and look at where the infrastructure is located. So, right now, East Bay Township has industrial parks, Garfield and Blair has some industrial parks.
So they were not invited to this?
No, East Bay--
No, the other townships.
The others?
The other--
Paradise, Union, Fife Lake?
They were all offered.
Okay.
We went to, to Long Lake and said that, and they offered a resolution of support. And if this is up and running, and it's successful, they may come in again. But all townships were offered to come in at, at this point or in the future. We did not exclude that, Commissioner Henschel. So I just want to make that clear, but we, but we wanted to also, at this, because it was a quick, we needed to formulate this by the end of the month. But those are the core communities that came to the table first, and the county and the city must be the applicant. So we needed to have those two entities for sure.
If I can just make a quick remark, and then I'll move to Commissioner Gilman. My experience with townships, especially the, the smaller ones and the southern ones, you gotta get it on the agenda, and somebody has to be over there making a presentation to explain it to them, and then the board can deliberate and discuss whether they want to get in, or get in later, or see how it goes. But sending a letter, or me making a county commissioner report on, you know, sort of what's happening in the county in terms of next Michigan, I mean, they're, and I don't know all the ins and outs to the thing, all I'm saying is, in order to get their attention, and they always have, I'm just gonna let you know, they always have a feeling they're being left out, and they don't get the, the attention that the bigger townships do. All I'm saying is, is that for representatives from the smaller townships, in the southern, whatever, whatever area you're at, it would be helpful, just my personal opinion, not speaking on behalf of the board, that at some point in time, we have to do an outreach, get on their agenda, get someone out there to talk to them.
This program may not be practical or applicable for small townships. And so the point is, I'm sorry?
I don't think it will be. You know, Long Lake is probably the only other one that probably fit Peninsula Mike.
Yeah, so--
You know, Fife Lake, they've got a small, you know, downtown village, and so is, so is Parry Kingsley.
This is--
They have a village.
Yeah, but this is, businesses, I mean, the criteria in this, that qualify for this are quite specific. And I think strategically, there was a decision made that this is an intergovernmental agreement. Obviously, it's easier to put an intergovernmental agreement together with five units of government than it is with 10 units of government. I think our goal here was to get it up and running, see if it's successful, as its success builds, welcome anyone in who qualifies with property to do this. But at this point, I, I think it would be, it would be pointless to try to engage every community and to participate in this, because frankly, some of them don't, won't qualify.
Well, we don't know whether the state's going to designate us as, as an available district.
So this is not to be perceived in any way as omitting anybody from participation, it's simply to get it up and running, get it going, and I've sat in those meetings with Commissioner Richardson, with Chuck Corn from Garfield, Glenn Lyle, and Pat Paul, and everyone's open to the, and Ben Biffus, everyone's open to the idea of others joining, once we get this thing up and running, if there's a purpose for them to be there. All right, Commissioner Gilman.
I just, I guess, one of those, there's a couple of things, of course. One, this is a corporation. It is a corporation that has the ability to incur debt. And number two, as far as those outlying townships, for Acme, for example, or Whitewater, if there, if there was a certain Renaissance zone that was needed for a processing plant or something, I guess, would they be able to get it if this existed, or would they have to join this particular authority to be able to qualify for, for some of those abatements or, or exclusions? Again, it's, it's more government to me. It's making people have to capitulate to other people to be a part of the great big plan, and I, I just can't support it.
Thank you. Any other comments or question on the motion? We have a motion by Commissioner Wheelock, seconded by Commissioner Lemkool to move forward and approve the resolution, next Michigan, interlocal agreement. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Henschel?
Yes.
Gilman?
No.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Thomas?
Yep.
Richardson?
Yes.
Max Bauer?
Yes.
Lemkool?
Yes.
Chairman Niman?
Yes. Motion passes with one nay. All right, that concludes the consent calendar, and we have no unfinished business that I'm aware of. We have no new business that a commissioner has been asked to be put on the agenda. This is second public comment. Does any member of the public wish to speak at this time? Seeing none and acknowledging no. We will move on to commissioner comments and committee reports. Commissioners, do you have anything? We'll start with, oh, Commissioner Gilman, and then we'll go straight down.
Just, just the one thing, Dennis was able to get ahold of a couple of us to go out to Garfield Township for a 5:00 meeting the other, the day was a study session for the water, for their water and sewer authority that they are going to attempt to put together. There's a lot of concern, of course, from our employees, and, and as I had referenced earlier in the, in the budget comments, I would say that our administrator did well in defending what changes might affect them, and he made sure that some questions were at least answered. But there really wasn't, in terms of questions answered, though, there really wasn't a lot that could be said at this point. They're still in a question and answer of themselves, what they're really trying to do, and then, although they do have language already written up for the formation of their corporate, corporate entity, it looks like they're several months out from, from doing anything, and they're gonna be having some more meetings. At this point, they had not had open meetings, as far as we understand. I mean, this was the first one that we were aware of, but from here on out, they're, they're pledging to make sure that the public is made aware by postings. Other than that, I'm just trying to think of the, some, some things that might stand out.
It is, it does not include the septic treatment?
It does, right, that's one thing, it doesn't include they don't want to have anything to do with the septic treatment plant.
In, in the, in the authority.
In the authority, correct. So they would, they would just leave that for the--
Standalone.
Right, as a standalone, and with solid waste, of course, in the, the EPW. Other than that, again, we had, we had a couple of employees speak to their concerns of maintenance and what have you, but, but again, there, there's a lot more to be said, and I suspect that the other meetings will be coming up within the next couple of months.
I think they also agreed that they will not approach our, our employees on issues of employment without involving us in the discussion, so that was very helpful. Thank you. Any, okay, we'll just follow the line here. Commissioner Henschel, anything?
Sure. I believe that was, Whitewater Township had a conversation with Metro Fire Chief about possibly being part of Metro, and they decided it wasn't a fit, so it looks like Whitewater's gonna go back to rural fire, is my understanding.
They pulled out of rural.
What's that?
They just made a motion to pull out of rural.
Yeah, yeah, they kind of rescinded that. They just, they found it to be more cost-effective to be part of rural. Is, is my understanding. That wasn't at a Whitewater meeting, but that came out of the Metro meeting.
That's interesting.
The, I think you all have gotten the legal memorandum from our counsel, Bob Cooney.
It was passed out earlier today.
Yes, came in email, and it was passed out on everyone's desk today. Great opinion about the issue with Northern Lakes Community Mental Health, and our contract with them for providing psychiatric services and medications in the jails. And I guess I would look for a little direction from the board, is where, where do we go from here? You know, our, our attorney says they have a contract to provide those services. We are paying, in my estimate, between $30,000 and $40,000 a year for those same services. So, and that is, $20,000 of it is, we actually hire a psychiatrist to come in, and then the other, between $10,000 and $20,000. I only got like three or four months from our administrator, Bob Hall over there, so I just estimated it was about $10,000 to $20,000 in medications.
Commissioner Max Bauer?
I have a question. Can we deduct our costs from our payment to community mental health?
Well, I guess I wouldn't want to give a definitive opinion on that here, but that my concern about that would be that the jail seems to have gone out and contracted for the service without consulting with the other partners in the authority.
Okay.
And so probably not, but, yeah.
So my next question is to Dennis. If we no longer do that, if we stop that, how do we get the service that I'm hearing that we've paid for?
Well, I think the answer to that would be, well, according to the opinion, and I only read it over quickly today, but according to the opinion, if we no longer provided that additional service, it would become the responsibility of mental health to take care of that.
The caveat is in the last paragraph there, where it indicates that, you know, the enabling resolution does not specify what services are to be provided, doesn't get real specific. And so, is having a psychiatrist come into the jail included in those services? Probably not, because the other counties aren't getting that service, but when they take an inmate to a hospital for psychiatric care, those services are being covered by CMH, and there's never a bill to the other county. So I don't think there's any question that if Grand Traverse County took its inmates to months in hospital for, for treatment, for, for mental health issues, that that would be picked up by CMH. And, and so you get this give and take, whether it's less expensive and better treatment to have the psychiatrist come into the jail, as opposed to taking them to the hospital.
One of the issues, Commissioner Henschel knows this, one of the issues that we had was, there was a time when we were taking them to the psychologist and psychiatrist of mental health, but the psychiatrist and psychologist refused to come into the jail, so we would have to take two officers and transport them to their office, where they would be treated by mental health. And the point was, it got to the point where it was so expensive and, and manpower-intensive to, every time there was an appointment, take them to the office of the mental health psychiatrist, that the, the jail made the decision, it's better to bring in another psychiatrist that will come in here, because we save all the manpower.
Since this is under reports, I'm just wondering if we could, if, this obviously is gonna entail more discussion and more feedback.
Perhaps at Public Safety?
I would suggest that--
Let's just refer this item to Public Safety.
We have a discussion at Public Health and Safety.
And we'll ask Bob Hall to be here, and Bob, if you could come back, I think that would be good.
Greg will be here, too.
Let's see, I started, in all fairness--
A question on this.
Yes.
You know, I'm just wondering if, pre to that meeting, that Dennis and Bob Hall and Greg get together and kind of decide what should be done, and how best to be able to do this, rather than it become a discussion with us, that they would be the ones that try and resolve the issue, and then bring a report back to us as to what their, what their findings are.
I've been through a dozen of those meetings in the last 10 years.
I know, I know.
Let's, let's, let's try to figure out our strategy first, and let's include Commissioner Henschel in that meeting, because he is our representative. Okay. Any other reports from Commissioner Henschel? Thank you very much. Commissioner Max Bauer?
Okay, thank you. It is with deep regret that I tell the board that Al Larson, the president of Parks and Rec, has resigned. I hope you wouldn't mind me sharing the reason why. He did write it in his resignation letter, but Al was diagnosed with cancer. And, you know, I, I first met Al several years ago in, in the, in the pool, he's a fellow swimmer, and I talked him into applying for the Parks and Rec Board, and I'm not sure if he'd known what he was getting into, if he would have filled out his application or not, but fortunately for Grand Traverse County, he was selected, and I'll tell you, by every single board member's account, he was, he's been an outstanding member of the board. As president, I don't think, well, he was just, I don't have anything but wonderful things to say, and I want to express my gratitude for his service, and I want to wish him the very best and a full recovery.
Can, Dennis, could we have staff prepare a letter to the chairman of the, a commissioner regarding his resignation and his health, regarding his health issues, and kind of wish him the best in his, you know, his, his medical and recovery, hopefully recovery, or whatever? I don't know how you want to say it, but--
I, I guess I would, we'd be more than happy to do that. He did present a letter today for you.
Okay. Okay.
And I'd like to get that to you first and have you review that before we do that.
And is the board fine with sending some kind of acknowledgement letter out?
Well, I think, don't we do that to all members? We thank them for their service and their times of service.
We generally will do that by a certificate, but we'll do that, too, but, you know, this is kind of a letter, because he's got cancer and stuff, so. Okay, we will go to Commissioner Wheelock.
Well, I guess, two things. First, I apologize for not being here at two o'clock this afternoon. I just had some issues in my business that required my attendance.
Yes, we explained that.
I could not do anything with that. I guess the other comment is a little bit more personal. In regard to the repairs made last week at the Civic Center pool, you know, four years ago, Danny Brown contacted me about light poles that we had routinely made to go around the Civic Center track. I provided him with the information of what those had been made, how they'd been made. Bids were sent out to purchase 20 of those poles. I didn't receive a bid packet. I didn't have an, or didn't get an opportunity to bid the job. Another local company was contracted, which is fine. The problem was, when they rewrote the specifications from what I did, they forgot to include the base plates. So the poles were built, fabricated, powder coated, with no base plates on them. So after the fact, they had to have the base plates welded on and had the paint touched Two years ago, we had a situation where they removed the turbine from Boardman Dam, and George called me and made a point to go right down and get the information it took, submitted the proposal to build an emergency cover for it. Happened that we had a meeting that very night. They had prices from three companies. It was determined that because of my conflict, two commissioners voted no, a commissioner was absent, I had to abstain, and we did not have two-thirds of a vote to have me contract to build that plate, and it cost the taxpayers of this community $600 additional money. A month and a half ago, facilities had a truck that had a problem with the hoist in the hoist, in the rack on the flatbed. They took it to multiple places throughout the community. No one would repair it, or the cost of the repairs was more than the truck was worth. We repaired that truck for a cost of $360. It is safe to operate. It absolutely will serve this community for the next five years as the use that they're using it for. Last week, we have a situation in the easeling pool where an aluminum housing broke off, one of the legs broke off that supports the diving platform. They had the welder who's on staff at the civics, or at the facilities, look at it. He couldn't repair it. They contacted at least one of their company who came in and looked at it, said they wouldn't touch it. I get the call as the last thing, oh, by the way, we need it for diving practice tomorrow night. So I take one of my employees personally down there to do the job. I went down and looked at it, went home, fabricated the components to reinforce it, went down personally and made sure that it happened and got done. I'm very good at what I do, but I'm pretty insulted when this county cannot see fit to even give me an opportunity to look at the work. And, you know, obviously, you know, I'm 150, 200 jobs behind. I am good at what I do, and it just is, I take it personally, and I'm truly insulted by the fact that this county cannot see fit to even give me the opportunity to bid on the work. He's not on our bid list? I don't, I don't understand that.
I'm trying to recall, I'm trying to recall in the past year or two what work we've done. I was under the impression that we've had several conflict that you've had to provide to the board for work that you've done. It seems to me like we've done that.
I haven't done anything since I've done the inside of the jail. The only job I've done since the inside of the jail was what I did the other day.
Well, you know, you have the same...
The handrails, but those were done for a contractor, not for the county.
You have the same situation with Commissioner Fleese. I mean, any county commissioner, from what I understand, from the opinion from Bob Cooney, is that any county commissioner can, if they own their business, for example, Commissioner Henshaw, is on a bid list, that if they have the lowest bid and is picked, then they go through their disclosure process, and they're not excluded from the bid list.
No, the difference is, I'll have to check into this. This is the first I'm hearing of Sonny's concern. He's not expressed this to me until, what I'm hearing is tonight. I will go back and look at it. I think the issue, my initial response is, most of these kinds of things are two, three, four, $500 things. They don't require three bids to get them done under the purchasing policy, and perhaps, and I don't know how many of them occur, I don't know if there's been one or 50, perhaps in Danny Brown's case, he may go, since they don't require bidding, he may go to another bidder if he can get it done to avoid the conflict. If we did it the other way and just went to Commissioner Wheelock, because it was allowed under the purchasing policy, it would look like a conflict. So it may be that he's taking small projects, if in fact there are small projects, it may be that he's taking them to other contractors who can do the work, because the purchasing policy does not require that we send out three bids for things that are $500 or $1,000. So I don't know the answer to it, but I'll try to get the answer to it. Commissioner Wheelock, I'd like to talk to you more about it, because it was, by no means on behalf of staff is it meant to offend you in any way. You know, we're dealing with this conflict issue, but, you know, I, on the other hand, if there's a $500 project, I don't want to be in a position where I have to go to some other, I have to get bid every time so that Commissioner Wheelock can bid it. If you say, we're fine with Commissioner Wheelock bidding it, that was an issue before.
Right, and that's the way it was done for a long, long time?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, there were selected projects that Danny just brought to me, and we took care of.
You know, we've told, we've told you before when we had this discussion on conflict of interest, there, to our knowledge, and Danny would tell you this, too, there's no one we can count on to do the work faster or do the projects that nobody else wants to do, like Commissioner Wheelock. And every time there's been a county project that we've asked him to do, he makes it his number-one priority and gets it done before anybody else. It's simply a matter that other commissioners raised this as a conflict of interest issue several years ago, which triggered the whole conflict of interest policy, which triggered us to be very careful about how we do this work, and we always try to do it above, you know, make sure that it's done in the appropriate manner. So that's simply it. If the board is comfortable with that, you know, I would tell you that our staff, especially in facilities, would more, would more often than not call Sonny first. But there's always that appearance of conflict, and that's why we, that's my guess as to why we've avoided it, if we have.
Okay.
Could I comment on that? Is there a way to bid out for a preferred contractor for welding situations?
Bob said no.
You can't do that?
No.
To bid out for emergency situations, what the price might be, charge per hour, and have three or four bids on that, and then we would select a bidder, and if Sonny's the lowest bidder, at least he's got a chance. Now he doesn't have a chance. And that was, I fought against this, this proposal to begin with, because it was such a detriment for anybody who would ever want to run for county commission, that it would be a bad thing for their business. And I want you to know, I voted against it back then, and this is just the reason why.
All right, Commissioner Gilman, go ahead.
I just wanted to say something to this. First, there's no doubt about it. You bend over backwards, you jump, you go out and you take care of business. If there's a camera down, they said, Gilman, you're the only guy who can figure out what we need here. I would do that, too. I think any of us would do it if we weren't going to lose money in the process. Now, unfortunately, common sense is on life support right now. We just can't handle these things with a phone call or what have you, but...
Well, I want to respond to that. You know, common sense, it's a good way to put it, Commissioner. The problem was that for years, what's, what happened, and Sonny, I think you'd agree with this.
Yeah, we get hammered.
No, what would happen was, for years, my staff would just call Sonny. And the reason was because it got done fast, it got done cheap, and it got done right. And when the issue was raised by commissioners, that they thought there was a conflict of interest on Sonny's behalf, that's when the red flag came up. And in fairness, that was legitimate concern that we weren't taking that work to anybody else, but there was a reason for it. It was because it was, so we went through a period where pretty much Sonny was getting all the work, to where Sonny's not getting much of it. And let's be clear on this, it's not a lot of work. It's not like this is tens of thousands of dollars a year. Sonny, we looked at that, remember? And what was it, 10,000 or 12,000 over like 10 years?
Yeah.
It was a real, it was a small amount of money.
Could we possibly have, Bob, would you, would you be willing to take a look at our conflict of interest policy for commissioners and to see if there's a, any type of room for smaller bids that they can do a verbal, three calls, and then just pick one and go, and it doesn't require a county commission approval or something like that?
I just want to comment, because Commissioner Lemko seemed to be looking to me for an answer, but what I recall our office being involved in was purely application of the state statute.
Right.
And requiring, you know, that statute is very specific about what's required if a county commissioner is going to do work for the county. And those are the only requirements that I recall our office ever being involved in as far as, you know, what, what policy or the requirements were going to be. I don't recall a purchasing policy where, or being involved in that discussion of a purchasing policy that would exclude a county commissioner because of a conflict of interest.
There is no policy like that?
I didn't think of that.
There is not, no.
So that's just kind of an internal. As far as emergency services, there, part of that state statute talks about exactly that, emergency services, and what happened with the swimming pool is exactly what's supposed to happen under state statute. It was explained at, you know, the next board meeting. You'll take a vote at the following board meeting to, I assume, approve the expense, and that's according to HOIL, so.
And according to the purchasing policy, in an emergency situation, we can forego the regular requirements of a bid policy, a bid process and make a decision. I can. And so that's what we did in this case. But, you know, if you think about it from Danny's perspective, let's say, Danny breaks a trailer hitch or an axle, okay? If Danny knows that our policy on conflict, unless it's an emergency, requires notification by the commissioner prior to action taken place, and Danny's got a piece of equipment that may not be a life and death emergency but needs to be fixed, it makes sense that he'll go find it someplace else where he can get it done and get it done in a few days under our regular process without having to go through weeks of conflict, you know, conflict or regulation, I'll say.
So you know, Commission on Aging has an annual contract, like for small engine...
It's a maintenance contract.
That's just what I was going to say.
It's a blanket contract.
Do the same thing.
That's what I asked. You can do, you know, bid for a blanket contract and put it out, and if he gets it, he gets it. If he doesn't, he's at least had a chance to bid on it.
All right, look, can we schedule, I think this is worth scheduling at RMA for next month, if we can get something in the packet, and then that might give a little time for Bob to look at it. Is that fair or not fair in terms of time?
I just want to know what you're looking, you're looking for a, some sort of briefing on what the current policy is and what's required under state law.
And what exclusions are there, and whether we can, for example, for jobs under $1,000 or $2,000, whether we can go for a, go out for bid and have a contract for emergency services by an electrician, by a welder, by a plumber, by a whatever. It's fine. Okay, is that fair? All right, okay. Where did we leave off? Now we have, are you all done? Commissioner Wheelock?
Commissioner Lemko? Yeah, last night I attended the grand vision report to the community. There was a lot of great things that they talked about. Kim Pontius was appointed as the next chairman for that, and I congratulate Kim. He's been a very active person on the transportation, particularly in the railroad, to figure out how to bring rails to northern Michigan, and will be an excellent person to take over. And I just want to say thanks to Marsha Smith for leading that organization for two years. There was also about seven or eight videos that were done by students, and after the students gave each one of their presentations, they had a credit for each one of them. But then, when they got it all done with, they brought the students up to the front of the stage, and they received a standing ovation for what their product that they turned out. But also, I think it's great to recognize the value to each of the other communities that the Council of Governments has put together a $20,000 grant to each of the different communities, Sutton's Bay, Honor, Elk Rapids, I think, Alkaska, there was like five or six different grants of $20,000. One of those grants in Sutton's Bay generated over $1 million worth of work that's going to be done to protect the watershed in the bay. So, you know, the grand vision is the vision for us, the community, to figure out what we want to do for the next 50 years, and I commend the people that have been working on that, and it's an exciting process.
Commissioner Richardson? Commissioner Thomas? Okay, notices and announcements. You have your calendar at the back of your booklet. Any questions about anybody not missing meetings?
Yeah, just to let you know, the DHS pavilions is back to nine o'clock Friday.
I got that notice, yeah.
It went from nine to one because they were expecting a visit from DHS from the state of Michigan. That got canceled, so everything got pushed back to nine o'clock. So just to let you know for September. Also, for November, I will be gone the first through the 11th.
November, first through 11th?
I apologize, I don't remember the date. Maybe someone else does. The annual Planning Department Township Association...
Yeah, we just got that notice.
That's the eighth, I think it is.
I just got the letter, but I didn't bring it.
No, I think it's over than that, the second or third, maybe?
Yeah, I just, you know, if we can make sure that that...
That gets on the calendar.
Gets on the calendar.
Yeah, that'd be good.
I'm sure I have an email for it, but I don't know which file I stuffed it in.
And then also on the 26th of October is the planning for the Commission on Aging at the Civic Center from 3:00 to 7:00.
Okay. All right. Anything else in terms of announcements? Okay, we don't have a closed session scheduled, is that correct, Dennis?
Correct.
Okay, we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Who, by Wheelock, seconded by?
Support. I don't care.
All in favor?
Aye.
I suppose we stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Wow. How you doing?